Please, and join me in our pledge to the flag.
Our pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilman Max Marion will lead us in our invocation, sir.
Will you pray with me? Dear Lord, we come to you today as a governing body elected by the citizens of Glasgow. We first want to thank you for watching over the people of Glasgow yesterday, last night during the storms. I also want to thank you for watching over our beautiful city as well. Help us to make the right decisions for the city based upon what the majority of the people would want moving forward. Be with those that are lost, those that don't know you, and please forgive us of our sins. These things are asked on name. Amen.
Thank you. Be seated. First of all, we need to have a roll call. Clerk Simmons will take care of that for us.
Benil.
Present.
Gons.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick. Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Neil. Norris.
Here.
Trig.
Here.
Eight out of nine here. Thank you all very much for being here. Next, we need to, you've had the agenda since Thursday and had a chance to look over it. I will entertain a motion that we proceed with the meeting tonight as the agenda was presented.
Motion, Norris.
Sir, second.
Second, Marion.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The motion carries. Now, let's talk about the minutes from the meeting of Monday night, June the 12th. You've had a chance to look over those. I would ask that if you've had a chance to read them, would somebody entertain a motion to approve them? Okay, has your second?
Second, Lowry.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Minutes are approved. We have some annual departmental presentations, but I have decided, Mona, that I want to do some swearing in first because you're gonna, this is your night to meet a new employee and get a report from him at the same time. So Nick Hurt, if you'll come forward, if you want to bring your family with you. This is Nick Hurt. You all, for 25 years, have thought of Brandon Kearney as the Occupational License Fee Manager and the City Alcohol Beverage Administrator. Well, on June the 30th, Brandon is retiring. It's going to be difficult down there for sure, but we are so excited to have, in Brandon's place, Mr. Nick Hurt. Nick is, well, how do I say this? He's been here learning a whole lot about the processes down there, and we're just tickled that to have him with us. He's going to be actually giving the report, the annual report from the tax collector's office tonight, not because he's dying to get up there, but because it's Brandon's wife's birthday, and he chose to go with his wife. So Nick is going to fill in. You want to tell everybody who your guests are here?
Well, tonight I have my wife Amanda, and my oldest friends, and next is Allison, and Megan's one, and the little boy, Chris.
All right. Well, my goodness, what a good looking crew right there, for sure. And I understand, like, you know Councilman Lowry, do you?
Yes, sir.
So, you're saying part of the woods?
We're all going to say how far back.
Where was he? Was it on my old, my old, that big sort of road?
We did grow up in that country.
See there, it's just a little familiar. And then you'll get up here, you give a presentation. But right now, Brandon's last day is June the 30th, and so we can't have a new one until the other one's gone. This swearing in is going to be effective July the 1st, but we don't meet until July the 10th, so we got to have the tax collection in place at the beginning of July the 1st. So if you'll walk right over here, raise your right hand. I'm going to read the oath of office, and at the end I'll ask if you agree with what I said. Okay? This is for the oath of office for the Occupational License Fee Manager and the City Alcohol Beverage Administrator. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this common will and be faithful to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the Office of Occupational License Fee Manager and the City Alcohol Beverage Administrator according to law. And I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of this present Constitution, I, Nick Hurt, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with a deadly weapon, or have I acted as a second carrier of challenge, nor aided or assisted a new person thus offended. So help me, do you agree with those statements?
I do.
Congratulations. Welcome to the city. Get your signature right here. We'll make it official, okay?
Okay.
Stand right there, and then you can just sit back and relax. You got some nice people paying out for dinner. Oh, you are, thank you. He goes out for our thing. Thank you all for being here. I do. Good to see you all. All right. Let me see, you know what's essentially added to this?
Of course.
That's right. We are doing the annual report of the Occupational License Department as well as the City Alcohol Beverage Administrator's Department. Okay, we can do that, too. This is for this purpose right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. On the topic of Nick, we have a municipal order to read before we actually hear from Nick. Rich?
Yes, sir. Mayor, on order of the mayor, Nick Hurt is hereby appointed to the City of Glasgow non-elected city officer position of Occupational License Fee Manager and City Alcohol Beverage Administrator pursuant to KRS 241.170. This municipal order is adopted pursuant to KRS 83A060 in that it was approved by the Glasgow City Council on June 26th with an effective date of July 1, 2023.
You have heard the motion, you've actually heard the resolution, and I would ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Congratulations. I think this is cool. You've been sworn in twice, and you still have to say you've never fought a duel. So this is a really important position you have, Nick, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you to give us the annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the year of 20, from June, or July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, the budget called for the quarterly tax withholdings to be $8.9 million. The year-to-date amount is $9.735,110.81. The quarterly tax withholding penalty and interest was budgeted at $2,500. The year-to-date amount is $3,243.45. The net profit fees budgeted were $2 million, brought in was $2,350,094.45. The net profit penalty and interest budgeted for the year was $10,500. The year-to-date amount brought in, $26,397.54. The insurance fees budgeted was $1.5 million, brought in, $1,634,446.05. The alcohol sales budgeted was $525,000. Year-to-date amount is $602,534.19. Alcohol sales penalty and interest budgeted was $2,500, brought in was $2,073.73. The total budget for the year was $10,940,500. The brought-in amount was $14,353,900.22. I would like to say this. I have, as Mr. Mayor has said, I've learned a lot in the last few months from Brandon Kearney. His experience, his knowledge, it's going to take me a while to learn everything that he knew, but I devote my time to do that, and I appreciate what he's done and how he set the office up and what he's done to prepare me, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Nick. That was a good report, and my goodness, that's some big numbers, for sure, and I know you're going to enjoy continuing what Brandon has taught you, and we'll see how much you shock. It's $4 million in your first day is pretty good. We'll see how you do next year. But thanks a lot, and we're glad to have you here, and I've been watching. Everybody really enjoys having you on board here, and it's going to be, it's going to be a good thing. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have some more reports here to talk about. This is our annual departmental presentation. I am going to tell you that my phone rang this morning at 2:00 when April Russell called me from the Street Department building. She's been up working storms, doing all the things that had to be done, and yet she's right here to give us the full report from the Glasgow Department of Public Works tonight, Ms. April Russell.
Wes got up first.
Oh, Wes got up first, did he?
No, Wes got the call first. He's been up all night.
Yeah, but he had a tree in his driveway, so he didn't get to go very far, did he?
He did. I'm going to give you all of the, of course, you guys know we have five departments, so we're going to go through them fairly quickly, any questions you have. But tonight I did bring all of the people who run those departments, and so that, I don't know that all of you know them. That way you can see, you'll meet them, and we'll talk about them as we get to each of their slides. The first one we'll do is the Glasgow Transit System. Lanice Ko is here. She's our transit manager. She started with us last April, so she's been here a little over a year. She's doing a great job. The Glasgow Transit System was started in November of 1994. That's when we started serving the citizens. This year, the past few years, we've been on the CARES money from COVID, so the grant has been 100% funded. This year, starting July 1, it'll go back to 50/50. The city will pay 50%, and we'll get 50% reimbursed by the state, which is actually a federal grant. We still do not charge for those rides, so all the city bus rides are free to the citizens. They go to lots of different places, we have learned. We do doctor's appointments, pharmacies, grocery stores, social service offices, community. We've taken people to many different places. We pick them up. Our bus drivers are really amazing. They know the people who ride the bus, and they've learned them, we've learned them, and it's a, it's a good service for the community as a whole. There's 21 stops. Takes about an hour and a half to get, make the full circle. If somebody needs a ride that isn't able to make it to a stop, and they need to have some type of reason, handicapped, wheelchair, something along those lines, we'll go a quarter mile off of our route to pick those up. They have to call about. We ask that they call 24 hours in advance. Sometimes we are able to accommodate them, but we try really hard to stick with that 24-hour rule so that we don't have too many wheelchairs, things to that nature. In August of '22, last year, so during COVID, we had went back, and we were just doing daytime routes. August of '22, we went back to a full route. So we start in the morning at 6:30. They come in, and we end at 6:30 in the afternoon now. The ridership increased about 170 passengers in August, and it went up increasingly. The last four to six months, Lanice pulled those numbers. We're having approximately 50 riders a day, or busier in the mornings. TJ Pavilion, the Mayfield Plaza, Liberty Street, those are your most popular stops that we pick people up and take people to. The maintenance that we do that, through the transit system, which Lanice works, and then we have a full-time bus driver and a part-time bus driver, and he also works and does maintenance on all of our transit shelters, and they were able to replace the solar panels in the transit shelters this year. They take these trainings every year. I'm not going to read all of them to you. We do the first aid. We do dealing with difficult passengers. Then they also service community events. We do Harvest of History. We have been able to do several youth community projects this past year. We've taken children from the Y, the youth from the Y to the Bunch Center, different, different items along that line. We do economic development. There's been several times when groups have come in and wanted to go through the city, need to be taken to an industrial park. We'll go pick them up and take them so they can all ride together. And then they also helped with Groove and Glow in September of last year, transporting riders back and forth to their car. Okay, that was Transit Department. Do you guys have any questions for Lanice on Transit or myself? Anybody? We'll move to the Street Department. The Street Department is managed by Wes Billingsley. You guys don't know him. He's here with us tonight, so at the end, if you have questions, he's got you. All the different things for the Street Department. We have mowing crew at the Street Department. They mow five days a week, April through November. We do rightaways. We do city properties. So when we take back over city properties, things, we just got a new one, Cheryl texted us a couple weeks ago. We had acquired a new property. We'd go and mow that until it is sold. This year, we mowed Oddfellow Cemetery. We got that cleaned up, and we've been maintenance-ing that, and we also, the new multi-use path on Trojan Trail and Highway 249, we've been trying to keep that one maintenance also. Concrete, we do, so we have a concrete crew that does sidewalk repair. Right now, we're in the process of replacing the North Race Wall on the corner there. It's fallen in, so we're going to take that out and put a retaining wall back in. They take care of trip hazards. Anytime a new entrance is put in, they help with that. Street cuts, they repair those, and they do sidewalk projects. One of the biggest sidewalk projects we've done in the past year was the city square. It looks amazing. Like, they come in, you know, in middle of the night, cut the trees down, and then they were able, I think I have some pictures of them here, they were able to pour those sidewalks back. They, you know, the city crew poured all the way around, all four sides, and they did a really good job of that. And we had the planners built, and those have actually served the purpose that we wanted them to, not only to look good, but they're in all the events that happen on the square for people to be able to sit on them and rest. I see people do that daily. City maintenance, we take care of the city square. Every morning, we have a guy that comes up here. We have someone who waters the flowers every morning. They weed them. They just take care of things, blow them off. There was glass broken last night in the storm. They come up this morning and cleaned all that up and got it ready for the day. They take, we take care of the parking structure. We keep it clean. When the elevator goes down, they call. So the street sweeper is Monday through Friday, 4:00 a.m. to noon. That's when he runs. Last year, he picked up 136 tons with the street, street, street sweeper off of the sides of the road. We take care of all the rightaways, litter pickup. Last year, we collected five and a half tons of litter. Leaf season is in the fall. Every year, we collected 271 tons of leaves. We do edging along all the sidewalks. We take care of the signage in the city pesticide, herbicide. Of course, we do snow and ice, and Christmas tree pickup during that time of year also. Keep in mind, all the litter pickup and leaf season, all that stuff we take in, and street sweeping, we take into the landfill, so that's a service they provide for us. Citywide cleanup this year was in March. We took in 140, the city took in 143 tons. The county brought in 151 ton. Storm cleanup in March, we all know we had a big storm in March. We took in 557 tons free. We provided that to the community. And then we put roll-offs in all the parks, and 57 tons were collected from there. The Blue Way Trail cleanup, I'm not sure everybody knows what the Blue Way Trail is. We have a cacking trail through the city. It starts at the VFW, and it ends at Beaver Creek Park. Every May, we go in and cut some of the debris away. We have a really nice group of volunteers who come. They work with me every year. We plan it out. They come in, they clean everything out. We put the trash cans out. We give them trash bags and pickers, and we come back and clean up the trash after they've done that. That's a great service they do for us, and we coordinate together to make sure it's done properly. In August, we do Household Hazardous Waste. That's a grant we get, and we do that at Beaver Creek Park. We also have a free shredder that day for people to bring their documents in. We also close the roads for all events, so any road closures, whether it's for an event or just because the road needs to be closed for safety issue. We do Christmas parade cleanup, and we prepare parking for all the events. There is a sinkhole we repaired. Those come in the middle of the night sometimes when lots of rain come. We had one last night. There's some of the storm debris. The different departments we work with and coordinate with. This year, the cemetery, we helped with their landscaping at Fort Williams. Parks and Recreation Department, we helped with the storm cleanup. Beaver Creek Park Walking Trail, that got widened this year through a grant. We've hauled mulch for them. City Hall, we helped with their parking lot. The Police Department, we helped with mowing. We channel lined around their new garage, and we do some trimming for them. The Fire Department, we helped with the Richardson Field Fire. Wes went out there and knocked things down. And the Plaza, we helped with the crosswalk. We're fortunate that all the city departments help each other. Whenever any of us is in need, they call, and we swap back and forth. We'll go with this. Do you have any street questions?
April, I have a question. I had some citizens reach out to me today with, in regards to the storm debris and stuff. Do we, are we doing anything for them as far as, do they need to put it, you know, out by the trash, or anything's up on that?
No, we don't have an antenna for that this time. The storm wasn't nearly as big as the last.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
April, talking about sidewalk projects, do we have any planned?
We do. The sidewalk project we're working on now is on North Green Street. That sidewalk is very narrow, and we would like to make it ADA compliant. Wes and I have worked with the city attorney to make sure we have all the paperwork appropriate to take care of that and widen that so that they can come up there. That request has been made several times.
I get comments about Glenview Drive sidewalk and Scotty Drive sidewalk. Have we ever considered with the schools that are in that area and the housing that's going up in that area?
We have. That's actually part of the Gateway Plan that we have looked at several times. The estimate on it is very high, just to be honest with you. We have been working on that Gateway Plan and making sections as we go along, and hopefully that we will get there. We may have to bump up in priority based on the growth and population in that area.
Lot more traffic on that, and a lot more people are getting out there, so I'd like to see that one moved up if we could.
That would be a state project, because that's a state road. Glasgow Stormwater Department, we are, people do not realize, the City of Glasgow is an MS4. We have a permit that is with the state government. Their permit is with the federal government. We have six minimum control measures. They're listed there. You'll see, Lanice and I, we were at that, one of the Halloween things on the square. Part of that, part of the permit is public outreach and education. One of the things we did this year, we had the poop emoji, and we did the protect our streams, never leave a pile behind. You have to find different ways to get to people and make them remember you. So that, that was this year, one of this year's programs that we did. It was fun. Everybody liked it. Lanice enjoyed it. We have two employees that are dedicated to stormwater. They maintain drainage infrastructure. They install drainage infrastructure. They've done head walls, wing walls. They maintain the ditch lines. We install driveway tiles, sometimes when the citizen bites them. We have done in-house projects. We did the cave area on Redwood. We cleaned that out a couple of times already. We did the new Shamrock grave. You see that there. It looks really nice. They got finished with it. We did drainage tiles on Lena Drive and Williams Avenue. These are just some of them. We've done quite a few. Capital projects that we finished up this year was the Ellis Avenue and the Tanglewood Project. Straightened that out, and it looked really nice when we were finished. We are in the design phase of the Village Circle one now. That'll, that's been a long time coming. It'll take the, dry up the backside of those houses along there. Basically, that was a design issue from the beginning, from the person who developed it, and so we're going to come in and try to dry up their backyards for them. It was one of the projects that was in the master plan. Do you have any stormwater questions? I will tell you this. We had, we had a major rain event last night, and a lot of that's stormwater, and I know it is. A lot of people don't realize that when you get four and a half inches of rain in two hours, that's a 500-year event. We don't get those very often. We don't build infrastructure that'll take those. If we did, nobody could afford the taxes that it would cost to put that infrastructure in. But I will tell you, we had guys out from 1:30 on. They worked all night. They've worked all day. They cleared. They made sure people could get out of their driveways, out of their roads. We've cleaned ditch lines, things, and we will continue to do that. But, you know, a lot of people think it flooded, and it did, and that we could have prevented it, but that would have been really hard in a 500-year flood event. Just doesn't happen. Normal rains is what we strive to make sure we can manage, and they do a very good job of that. The sanitation, yes. They do not pay a stormwater fee any longer. We haven't paid that since 2016. Look, that's correct. That's when that went away. The Glasgow Sanitation Department, we manage, Wes manages that also. Three sanitation routes, Monday through Friday. They pick up 7,500 dumpsters weekly. We do double garbage after holidays, which means any, and this is a good rule of thumb to remember, anytime you have a holiday, if that day is your garbage day, we're going to come get your garbage the next day, and that day's garbage. So we run, everybody does garbage on those days. In the year, in my year, I ran the numbers from July 1 until June 22. The city sanitation department picked up 5,900 tons of garbage, household waste, and brought it. And we also, whenever you go, the process is, if you go to the water company, you have your water turned on. They send us a list once a week. We deliver you a can. If you have your water turned off, we come pick your can up. We do that. We work on those lists daily. You also call in if your garbage lid is broken off, or any, you know, you have issues, your can is busted. We also work on those. We have one recycling route, Monday through Friday. Every day, we, we do the entire, we match the three sanitation routes. So if your trash day is on Tuesday, your recycling day is also on Tuesday, and that is a free service that we do for the citizens, and it's really nice. We also do commercial cardboard recycling. The businesses get on the list. We do those usually on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
It's becoming more like Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday now.
More businesses are calling in, and so we put them on a schedule, and we go pick that up. Saturday recycling, we've been able to add another Saturday. We do it the first and third Saturday of every month. We have moved that permanently out to the landfill. We've built a building out there. It's really nice. Every first and third Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30, you can go out there and take your recycling, and they will unload it for you. You don't even have to wait in the landfill line. You can go to the left and just drop your recycling off and leave. Last year, we picked up three, we took care of 346 tons of recyclable materials.
April?
Yes.
Do we still promote recycling and our people in the community to do that? Is that still productive?
Yes, we do, and it's not always about, it doesn't make us a lot of money, but it saves room in our landfill, and it's, it's a good thing we do. And it's, it's a good thing we do for the citizens. It also keeps their, they don't have to pay for two or three dumpsters. If we're going to come pick up their recycling for free and they utilize that system, it helps them. And last, the landfill. Nick Miller is here. He is your landfill manager. And Colton Montgomery is here. He is your landfill engineer. So, the Glasgow Regional Landfield accepts waste from 13 counties. We, for compliance, our first and foremost job of every day is staying in compliance because when we are in compliance, we are still open and everybody is happy and we're not costing the city money. We answer to the Energy and Environmental Cabinet, Division of Air, Division of Water, Stormwater, and Groundwater. We do Division of Waste Management, Explosive Gas Monitoring, Army Corps of Engineers, Kentucky Fish and Wildlife. We have environmental reporting that has to be done daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly. We have to make sure that we get those turned in. Our hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:30. Every Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:30. All the waste that you bring into the landfill is monitored. It's for radiation and what type of waste it is. We do not accept asbestos, tires, and liquids. We do accept construction demolition and debris, municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, compostable materials, special waste, which is sludge from the wastewater and water treatment facilities. Last year, we collected 83,000 tons of municipal solid waste went into the landfill. 19,000 tons of construction demolition and debris, 346 tons of recyclable materials. We did 2,300 tons of compostable materials and 6,000 tons of special waste. So, they're busy out there in all the different areas. Things we did this year, we purchased acreage for cover soil. It saves the city money when we're able to buy ground and not have to buy dirt. We can truck that ourselves and because we use a lot of it. We purchased five portable litter fences. We have worked really hard the last few months on our litter problem and I know that's a subject that comes up frequently. We purchased those five portable litter fences. We're also installing another permanent litter fence that has helped tremendously. We built a recycling building. I think that's it right there on that one. That's a picture of it. It's really nice and helps us keep our recycling material clean and dry and we get paid more whenever we take care of our material. We installed a generator at the scale house so if the electricity goes off, we can still operate as if nothing had happened. And we also built a composting pad to help with that area. We are in year 10 of the explosive gas monitoring partnered with Farmers Rule Electric and Eastern Kentucky Power. We generate, right now, we are generating about 500 kilowatts of energy per month. It has, over the 10 years, it has been up and it has been down. We've done anything from 700 kilowatts of energy per month and now we're 500. It's just a process that we have to go through. As I said before, our number one goal is to stay in compliance. We take care of that first. We have 45 gas wells that are tuned monthly and that, that is a job. I know you guys know about Kalchance came back with us, started back in February and he has made a huge difference in our gas field, getting us in line. We have 20 boundary probes that are monitored daily, 12 prevention wells that are burned to prevent methane gas from leaving the property. And then I have pictures of the landfill. And that is all I have if you'll have any questions.
September, was it September or March?
It's in here. Yes.
So, we receive the benefits from it now? Does that go to the city?
We're, we're still paying off the red light, the note we took. And that should be paid off in December.
Yep. Well, that's right.
And we, we meet with Eastern Kentucky Power and farmers. We're meeting with them next week. We say, to make sure we see where we're going, where we've been, and where we're at.
April, where did the, when did the price go from $10 minimum fee to $20 minimum fee? Do you know when that happened?
It was last fall.
It was the last fall?
Last July 1st. Last July 1st. There you go.
Okay.
I know it was last year.
Other questions?
Any thoughts or estimate on the life of our existing landfill?
Met with our, we have several consultants that we work with and they're really good. And we talk with them pretty frequently. Last, they came in and we talked about how much soil we have left before we have to build the bridge. And everybody knows those are going to be a bridge built soon that we have to be able to truck it across. So, they keep a close watch on it. He always says not within our lifetime. I've never heard an exact number. Have you?
No. We can always do a call.
I do know that with us doing the methane and with us having that system, with us doing the recycling and over the years, the methane has it, it does sink. So, that does help with that area too. And then, of course, recycling is just going to help the life of the landfill.
From, one thing different that I was going to point out is that if you look at all the paperwork and everything, once upon a time, the landfill was combined with sanitation. But that's not the case anymore. The landfill, because of how technical it is, how much work it requires, the landfill stays on its own and sanitation is now operated by the street department. So, if you're ever looking for information on that, we've divided that up. Just an FYI. Any other questions? Good job. Good reports from all of our top folks here giving us good information tonight. Now, we have a presentation that I want you all to really pay attention to because there's a couple of things that Chief Howie is going to unveil here and these are going to be really, really exciting things. And he's got a special guest with him as well. So, this is Police Chief Guy Howie with some really important news, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, let me, give me just one second so I can get to the plate. Yeah, that's not it either. There we go. Before I get into this, I want to make one announcement. Last time I was here, we talked about where, where the police department was going and one of the things I talked about was partnerships and technology. I want to talk a little bit about a partnership first. I've been working really hard, not me, but everybody, Public Works, Code Enforcement, Fire Department. We've been having some issues on Park Avenue and we've been working really hard to try to get those resolved. And one of the things that I think is going to help tremendously is I signed a memorandum of understanding on Friday with Mr. Lessenberg. We are opening a police district office, a substation there in that shopping center. So, we have a few housekeeping items to take care of that down there. Some signage, some, some painting, some general housekeeping stuff. But you're going to be seeing more policemen down in that area. A lot of the officers, that's where they'll report before they go on duty. I think they'll be able to go there, write reports, meet with victims there, tape reports. Just, just a small little substation. We're going to see how that helps down there with that community and moving forward with that. So, I wanted to make that announcement tonight as well. The other thing I talked about was moving forward with some technology. And when I came here, I was, first week I was in there, Sergeant Talon came, came to me and he said, "Hey, have you ever heard about license plate readers or Flock cameras?" And I said, "Sergeant, as a matter of fact, I have because we used them in Hopkinsville and Christian County and they're awesome." And he said, "Would you care if I looked into it a little bit more?" And I said, "No, please go ahead." So, we are to the point now where we've developed our policy. There's an executive order in there tonight on that policy about the license plate reader program. And we've selected Flock Safety as the provider for those license plate readers. And as we get into this, you'll, you'll hear, "We don't own the equipment. We don't maintain the equipment. We're partnering with Flock Camera Systems Safety to do that." And so, I'm going to bring somebody up that can fill you in a whole lot more about Flock Safety than I can, and that's Amy Cornell. And she is with Flock Safety. She is their Community Relations Manager. So, Amy, if you want to come up, we're going to kind of tag team this presentation for you all tonight.
Yes, thanks, Chief Howie. Good evening. As Chief mentioned, my name is Amy Cornell. I'm a Community Affairs Manager with Flock Safety and it's great to be here with you all tonight. So, I have a brief presentation for you and please feel free to ask questions as well and we'll have some time afterwards too for questions. So, I want to tell you first a little bit about who we are as a company. So, our mission and values, of course, eliminate crime and protect the whole community and every community. That's the ultimate mission and goal. To tell you a little bit about how we started, our president and CEO, our founder, started the company in 2017 and this was because he and his neighbors were victims of crimes. They were seeing car break-ins, home invasions throughout their neighborhoods and he really wanted to do something about it. What he ended up doing is bringing evidence of, video evidence to the police who said, "This is great, but what we really need is a license plate to be able to track down these folks and arrest a suspect." So, he set out to develop a system that is something that's easy to use, that's affordable, that's ethical, and does the job and also protects privacy. So, to tell you a little bit about why the need is there, of course, here and everywhere across the country, police headcount is on the decline, but crime is still going up. And this is really, this is not intended to replace any sort of police work. Police, great police work is absolutely still necessary here. This is just a technology that really multiplies the force. And it's able to, I'll get into this in a little bit, but it's, it's able to capture objective evidence that can really go towards solving crime. So, I want to talk through a little bit about how the technology works and mostly, more importantly, how the technology doesn't work. So, when you get the Flock system, that photograph that you see on the top of the screen there, that's the back of a vehicle, we refer to that as a vehicle fingerprint. So, you see the license plate, you get the back of the vehicle, a timestamp of where that, where that was taken, which camera that came off of, and really just some information about the back of the vehicle. It's indiscriminate evidence and there's no facial recognition. It's not tied to any third-party database and there's no traffic enforcement tied to this technology. So, I hit on some of these points already, but what is the technology? It's license plate recognition, used to solve crime, and we work with various jurisdictions all throughout the country to adhere to their specific laws. So, what the technology is not, no personally identifiable information, as I mentioned. And also wanted to mention, it's actually the, the data that is not used by the police department or police agency in any sort of criminal investigation goes into the cloud. It's the Amazon Web Services Cloud that we use and is deleted after 30 days. So, it's encrypted end-to-end so nobody can see that, that information unless it's tied to a crime, then the police department will be able to use that. So, to talk through a few different ways that this technology works, both proactively is a big one. An example of that is if a stolen car is traveling through your city, it's probably not just going from end-to-end and driving out. It's probably, the suspect driving that vehicle is probably looking to commit some more crimes. So, it's a proactive way of really heading off and preventing more crime as well as investigative, which I spoke about earlier. And as these rates are clearing, your crime rates in your city, you'll start to see decrease. In addition, these cameras out in the community do act as a deterrent as well. So, want to speak a little about transparency and accountability and how we make sure to protect that. So, all of the data is owned by the agency and it's never sold or shared to any third-party by Flock. I also mentioned the 30-day data retention policy and then it's deleted. So, that short retention, we've found, is really the sweet spot between protecting privacy and also being able to give the police enough time to solve crime. So, no facial recognition software. And also want to point out, a search reason is required to even access the system. So, the police can't go in there and just search a bunch of vehicles. They have to, it has to be tied to a case. A crime has to have been reported in order for them to search. And as I mentioned, not used for traffic enforcement. There's no personal identifiable information. And want to talk through something that is unique that we offer. And this is part of the, the package. This is the Transparency Portal. What this is, is every community is different. So, you can really put what's most important for your community in this Transparency Portal. This could be something that you put on the website. It could be something that goes on your social media pages and it really, you can include your policy, you can include metrics, how many vehicles are driving by a certain camera. You can track all of that. You can do all the searches. You can show which agency's data is being, which other police agencies throughout the area, data is being shared with. So, it's really a way for, for the community and for anyone to just go on and be able to see, this is how we're using the information and this is how we're not. This is just a snapshot of many of the other jurisdictions throughout the state that have adopted Flock technology. And want to end with just a few examples. This, this is actually out of North Carolina. This is a stolen vehicle and a Flock Safety camera found a vehicle that was, that was the perpetrator of this armed carjacking was in their city. So, they actually used that information to make an arrest and get the vehicle returned to its owner. Lexington, Kentucky, a little bit closer to home. This one was a shooter who had fled, fled the scene in a stolen vehicle and that vehicle did show up on a Flock camera. Police were able to identify the stolen vehicle and make an arrest. And they also found out at that time that this is a shooter who was also previously charged with the shooting and killing of Scott County Sheriff's Deputy. And this is a little bit of some data to show, this is, Lexington, Kentucky has more than 25 cameras at this point, but this is just their first three months with the Falcon cameras and some of the results that they were able to see. I won't read all of those, but just to highlight a couple, 57 stolen vehicles recovered, 11 missing persons, number of persons charged with the crime, 97. This is a very recent example out of Louisville. This is actually this month. So, police had received a report of a suspect who had shot and killed somebody and then taken off and carjacked an individual and had taken off in that vehicle. The only lead that the police had was information on the vehicle that was carjacked and they put that into the system. And within about 20 hours, that vehicle showed up on a Flock camera. The suspect was still driving and the gun used in the homicide was still in the vehicle. One of the reasons why this particular case is so, so important and why the Flock system was really useful in identifying this person is because the suspect was a transient and did not have a home address. So, they would not have been able to otherwise track down this person. Couple more quick examples for you here. This is one out of San Bruno, California. This was a jewelry store robbery. Suspects masked and armed ran into a jewelry store. The jewelry store owner was able to chase these suspects off, but were concerned that they might try again and perhaps escalate. So, the suspect's vehicle, somebody did see the suspect's vehicle and it was placed on a custom hot list. So, in fact, those folks did come back and tried to rob the jewelry store again, but this is kind of speaks to the preventative piece of the Flock cameras. They were not able to get into the store because they were, they saw their vehicle. It was already hit on the hot list and they were able to make that arrest before they came in. And finally, I'll end on this. This is an Amber Alert out of Shambly, Georgia. That's a suburb of Atlanta. And this mother was pushing her baby in a stroller, walking down the street, and two masked and armed individuals ran up to her, snatched her baby, and took off in a vehicle. She didn't see the license plate, but she did have a description of that vehicle and she was able to let police know what the vehicle looked like. They put it into the system and less than six hours later, the vehicle was recovered in Alabama. So, it was a state away and the child thankfully was not harmed and was safely recovered and returned to his mother. Apparently, the couple had planned to raise the child as their own. So, thankfully, he's back with his mother now. back with his mother now.
Some of the success stories, when Sergeant Callen came to me, and I told him, yeah, go forward, he did, and he got a hold of Flock, and we were able to get access to the Flock system without any cameras. He's been using the Flock system to search, he recently had a forgery case in a pharmacy, a serial pharmacy forgery case, in which they were able to make an arrest, third-party got the license plate of the vehicle that fled, he entered it during his investigation, got the tag, checked it out on Flock, the suspect said that they'd never been in Elizabeth Town, when in fact, the Elizabeth Town cameras picked this vehicle up several different places in Elizabeth Town, called that detective, and they were able to follow up with some of that. Additionally, we've had some stolen cars come through, KSP has license plate readers on their commercial vehicles, they've recovered several stolen cars within Barron County and a couple within the city of Glasgow. We've recently, you want to, you got your...
Yeah.
So which one you want to do first? Yeah, so if you'll remember, the Barron County marching band had a trailer stolen from the school. Fortunately, unfortunately, we didn't have Flock cameras yet, but this particular trailer had a license plate on it. Had we had Flock cameras at that time, we could have possibly captured that, that tag and that trailer on that camera, and saw what vehicle it was attached to to give us a suspect and its last known direction of travel, and the type of vehicle that was being towing the vehicle. So we would have used it on that, we've had some people coming and going from transit criminals, coming and going from Bowling Green, from Louisville, some of them are using 31, others are using 65, but if you will have noticed, on that screen, who all was using it, Bartstown's using it. So they're a neighbor, and we would be able to share information that way. Detectives are able to put in, if we don't have a license plate, the detectives or somebody can put in, for example, I don't know, a red Toyota, tag number unknown, has a Salt Life sticker in the back window, they can put that in their hot list, go back and search that, and any red Toyotas that were seen going through a Flock camera in that area could pull it up and maybe narrow it down some time. So it's just another, it's another set of eyes on the corners of our jurisdiction that we're using to go forward. We're going to be using the solar, solar cameras, so there's no cost of electricity. We've talked with EPB, and they're willing to put them on their utility poles if necessary, and, or put them on there right away to, we're going to, we've selected, we're using three now, we're going to get three for a pilot program for those people leaving the city. And eventually, I'd like to get a whole bunch more for people coming in the city, so we can prevent crime that's coming in. If somebody's wandered out of Bowling Green, a Flock camera can hit that, the officer and the communication center will get a notification through an email system that'll pop up on their laptops with a picture of the vehicle and where it was coming in, and we'll be able to respond to that area. So... Mary, did you have anything else?
No.
Yeah?
No, go ahead. I'll pass this around to you all, this is kind of like one of the examples of a vehicle that it would pick up, picks up the license plate, shows the location where it was, this is actually my vehicle, we ran a test to see, I was in E-Town, visiting a business up there on multiple locations, and this is kind of like what the portal looks like when you, when you go in there, you enter, you know, the case numbers the chief alluded to, license plate, you select the cameras that you want to go to, and I'll hand this to you all.
Chief, do we know what companies or police forces are using that around us? Like Bowling, I mean Bowling Green, or do we know if they're using?
I think Bowling Green is in the process of a selection right now, is my understanding.
So if they don't go with Flock and they go with something else, do they collaborate together?
Yes. So if we have a stolen car, it gets entered into the National Crime Information Center in their database. So all the license plate readers have access to that, so they would get a notification that there's a stolen car, boom, in Bowling Green, or Bowling Green, we would get a notification, boom, there's a stolen car from Bowling Green.
Mayor, from a legal standpoint, I might add that I was speaking with Chief Howie and the representative from Flock, and I was interested in this when it popped up on the agenda, and I can just let you know that from a constitutional standpoint, searches and seizures and that sort of thing, that has already been tested in our court system. In 2018, the Kentucky Supreme Court dealt with the issue of license plate readers and determined that it was constitutional, it was not an unlawful invasion of a person's right to privacy. So from a legality standpoint, I have no issues with the city adopting this program.
The chief met with the safety committee a while ago with Amy, with the presentation, there was good conversation, and generally, we support this program.
How it would work or anything like that? All right, well, we...
The cost is $3,000 per camera, per year, and the equipment is totally owned by Flock, we don't have to support it, I don't have to change lenses, batteries, if the camera's damaged or is no longer serviceable, Flock comes out and installs a new one. So, and it's $3,000 a year per camera. We can, we can, private businesses can purchase their own, however, they're not allowed access to the data. So if Walmart, per se, or Rule King wants to put a camera of their area leaving or coming in, they're more than welcome to, and that'll give us access to any of those criminals that are coming in. I will tell you that we have people coming from Bowling Green all the time that are shoplifting at our Rule King and our Walmarts, are committing crimes. We had a shooting at Adams Place Apartments, the suspects were from Bowling Green, they were not local residents, so the transit criminals that are coming in and out of our city are causing us some issues, and I think Flock's a great answer to help us resolve those. And let me repeat, folks, this is not a traffic enforcement camera, it has nothing to do with traffic enforcement, and there's no facial recognition, nobody's spying on anybody, it's all, like Amy said, it's a fingerprint on a vehicle. Yes? The first three are in my budget for this year, I'd love to have more, and depending on the success rate, will depend on how many more we get. I think you're going to find that as more and more success stories come out from these other agencies, more and more agencies are going to lean towards something like this.
I hope that we can encourage private businesses to move into this area.
That'd be great.
Well, this particular, this presentation was for information only, because we have, I've already signed the executive order to buy the first three, but I thought this was a really good way, the chief did a really good job of explaining it in the other one, and Ms. Cornell did as well, back in the executive meeting, and I'm really excited about what this tool is going to be coming to the Glasgow Police Department, but I'm also excited about the substation at Park Avenue, I think that is really going to be another extra improvement for the city police department and the citizens of Glasgow, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council.
All right.
One other quick thing, the storm last night, let me tell you, the Public Works folks, they rocked. I mean, my guys were out with downed power lines, downed trees, they'd get there as soon as they could to open those up, open the, down, by Bailey Gibson, that road down there was terribly flooded, we lost one police car to flooding last night, and they were right there, Johnny on the spot, and I really appreciate what they did for us last night.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate your staff being out in all different types of inopportune weather to take care of us and keep eyes on things as well. All right, that takes care of the new business, we have some old business, and I can see Stephanie and Maddie back there, they're on the edge of their seats, because it's time for the second reading of the budget ordinance, Rich?
Mayor, I'm going to approach this a little bit different, try to summarize this, this is the first, this first ordinance is amending our existing budget for 2022. There are nine transfers from the Unappropriated General Fund, there are two transfers into the General Fund, and there are two transfers from the Unappropriated Plaza Fund, so I'll start with the nine transfers from the Unappropriated General Fund. We have $61,000 that is going into the Administrative Contractual Service Account for liability and work comp insurance expenses, $2,850 going into the Administrative Maintenance and Repairs Account for back parking lot repairs, $3,500 to the Administrative Accrued Vacation Account for accrued vacations, $161,037 to the Administrative Opioid Settlement Account to be used pursuant to law, $34,500 to the Legislative Professional and Technical Account for legal fees for the ethics trial, $3,804,900 to the Police Department Building Account for the garage final phase, $24,740 to the Police Department Accrued Vacation Account for accrued vacation, $24,200 to the South Central Kentucky Cultural Center Maintenance and Repairs Account for new heating units, and $9,500 to the Transit Health Insurance Account for health insurance expenses. The two transfers into the General Fund are $60,463 to the Administrative Federal Monies Account, that's the ARPA money, the COVID money, and then there is $161,037 into the Administrative Opioid Settlement Account from that settlement. The two transfers then from the Unappropriated Plaza Fund are $39,800 into the Plaza Professional and Technical Account for professional services performed, and the second one is a $7,000 transfer to the Plaza Materials and Supplies Account for concessions. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
This is the second reading of this ordinance, I will entertain a motion that we go ahead and pass it on second reading.
Motion, Lowry.
All right, is there a second? Second by Benel? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ordinance passes, we can keep working on the budget, sir.
Mayor, I'm going to, same thing, I'm going to attempt to summarize this, we had the first reading, and I went through all the numbers last time, so this is the annual budget proposal and message delivered to the City Council, this will be for the upcoming fiscal year, July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024. There are 23 accounts or departments within this budget, nine of the accounts have carryovers with respect to the revenue for the upcoming year, there will be 19 of 23 accounts that have revenue. For expenses for the upcoming year, 22 of the 23 accounts have expenses, and then for the upcoming year-end estimated fund balances, there will be nine of those accounts that will have a carryover into the upcoming year. So the bottom line for this budget for the estimated carryover, $27,58,062. The bottom line for the estimated revenue for the upcoming year, $29,280,25. Estimated expenses from all of these accounts for the upcoming year, $29,192,864. That leaves an estimated fund balance for the end of the year, after the upcoming fiscal year, of $27,145,223. This ordinance shall take effect as of July 1, 2023, according to passage and publication according to law.
This too is the second reading of an ordinance for the budget for next year, I will entertain a motion that we pass it on second reading.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Neal was, gave the motion to first. All, well, first of all, anybody want to have any further discussion on the budget?
Mayor, I just want to comment on all the department heads and the finance group that worked to make this happen. This is a budget that increases payroll, provides for public safety, we're buying equipment with it, we're making improvements, better day operations, and it has no COVID money in it or outside sources, this is being based on revenues generated by the city and citizens of Glasgow, so this is a very proactive budget, and a budget that rewards the work that a lot of people have done, so hats off to everybody involved.
Excellent comment, and I think everybody that serves in the city government and serves up here at this council should all be proud of how we are managing the money of the taxpayers and the good things that we are doing for it, so I'll throw that in there too. Now, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain, well, I'll just go ahead and say, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have to do a roll call, don't we? Yes, I'm sorry, I was going too fast. Clerk Simmons need to get a roll call on this.
Lowry?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick? Eight to one.
All right, so now, the motion is passed, and the second reading of the ordinance has passed. Let's move, we have another ordinance, this is a supplement to the 23 Code of Ordinances that we need to consider, Rich?
Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed its 2023 S-55 supplement to the code, which is attached as Exhibit A, this contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Code of Ordinances of this municipality. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections to the code, which are based on or make references to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes. And whereas it is the intent of the Glasgow City Council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the law of the Commonwealth, now therefore be it hereby ordained as follows, Section 1, the 2023 S-55 supplement of the code of the city of Glasgow as submitted by American Legal Publishing and attached as Exhibit A is adopted by reference as if specifically set out. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
You've heard the second reading of the ordinance, I'll entertain a motion to consider it. Okay, and is there a second? Okay, Marlon. Okay, well, this is being an ordinance, we need to have a roll call vote, Miss Mona.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick? Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance passes. We have several appointments to consider, so Rich, I'll ask for you to start with these municipal orders that we're going to be considering.
Yes, sir. On order of the mayor, Jesse Reed Brown is hereby reappointed to the Board of Building and Housing Appeals, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, this appointment is four years, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted pursuant to law this June 26, 2023.
Is there a motion that we consider, Mr. Brown?
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let's move to the next municipal order.
On order of the mayor, Danny Gibson is hereby reappointed to the Board of Building and Housing Appeals, Stormwater Advisory Committee, appointment for four years, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted pursuant... June 30, 2027, adopted pursuant to law this 26th day of June 2023 by the council.
You've heard the reading of the ordinance. I'll entertain a motion to call for the question. Okay, Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Sir.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Stevie Riddle is hereby reappointed to the Board of Building and Housing Appeals, Stormwater Advisory Committee, again, a four-year term expiring June 30, 2027, adopted pursuant to law this 26th day of June 2023.
You've heard the reading of the order. I would entertain a motion that we, uh, pass this, uh, order?
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order carries.
On order of the mayor, Sue Mutter is hereby reappointed to the Brad Aging Council. This appointment is for two years, expiring June 30, 2025, adopted pursuant to law this 26th day of June 2023.
You've heard the order to reappoint Ms. Mutter to, uh, the Aging Council. I'll entertain a motion that we pass this.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, and a second by Councilman Neal. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Byron Sorrell is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow-Barron County Tourist and Convention Commission as the city-at-large appointment to the commission. This is a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2026, adopted pursuant to law today's date.
You've heard the reading of the order. I would consider a motion to vote on Mr. Sorrell's reappointment.
Motion, Trig.
Second, Lowry.
Okay, all right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Amy Van is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow-Barron County Tourist and Convention Commission as a lodging representative to that commission. This is a three-year term, expiring June 30, 26, adopted today pursuant to law.
Is there a motion to consider reappointing Ms. Van to the Tourism Commission?
No.
Okay, by Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Lowry. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order carries.
On order of the mayor, Thomas Grubbs is hereby reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a two-year term, expiring June 30, 2025. This order is adopted pursuant to law today's date.
You've heard the reading of the order to appoint, or to reappoint Mr. Grubbs, uh, to the commission. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second by Benel.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Tim Gooden is hereby reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a two-year term, expiring June 30, 2025, adopted today's date.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the order. Is there a motion for us to-
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, Benel. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Ricky Houchens is hereby reappointed to the Joint City-City Planning Commission. It's a four-year term, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted today's date.
You've heard the reading of the order. Is there a motion to consider the question?
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Neal. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order carries.
On order of the mayor, Joan Norris is hereby reappointed to the Joint City-City Planning Commission, a four-year term, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted today's date.
You've heard the reading of the order to appoint Ms. Norris to the city, the Joint City-City Planning Commission. Is there a motion to vote?
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Trig.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
On order of the mayor, Candy Weddington is hereby reappointed to the Joint City-City Planning Commission, a four-year term, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted today's date.
All right, you've heard the reading of the order. I will entertain a motion to vote on the order.
Motion.
That's from, uh, Councilman Marion, the second.
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Lowry. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have some new business to consider. We've got the first reading of an ordinance involving one of our local industries. Rich?
That whereas the City of Glasgow, Kentucky has adopted an occupational license fee ordinance providing for an occupational license fee of one and three-fourths percent on certain wages paid to employees in the City of Glasgow. Whereas NEMAC USA has made an application for certain benefits and incentives available to it under the Kentucky Business Investment Program, sometimes known as KBI, as a result of its commitment to expand or upgrade its Glasgow facility to support a potential EV client. Whereas the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority has preliminarily approved the KBI incentives. Whereas the City Council of Glasgow is willing, as one of the incentives, to permit the retention by NEMAC of 1% of the 1 and 3/4% occupational tax revenues to be paid by employees of said company, recognizing that said company's expanded economic presence in the city would enhance the economic property of Glasgow, Kentucky. And whereas the City Council of Glasgow, Kentucky wishes to demonstrate its willingness to accept the measure of retention of said payment or deduction by said company as described above, now therefore hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. The City of Glasgow takes notice of the application of NEMAC USA, Inc. for benefits and incentives available to said company under the Kentucky Business Investment Program administered through Kentucky's Economic Development Finance Authority, including the application by said company for retention of or rebate to said company of 1% of the 1 and 3/4% occupational tax revenues to be paid by employees of the company. Section two, that the approval herein granted is subject to said company receiving final approval of its application and meeting all terms and conditions of its eligibility for said benefits under the Kentucky Business Investment Program. Section three, that the City of Glasgow does hereby ordain that for 10 years, subsequent to the activation date, as that term is established by and among the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority, NEMAC, and our local economic authority, the Barron County Economic Authority, NEMAC USA, Inc. shall be entitled to retain or have rebated to it 1% of the 1 and 1 3/4% occupational license fee, which would otherwise be paid by employees of said company from their respective salaries and wages. The 1% retention or rebate shall not apply to other income or net profits of said company and shall apply only to the occupational license fees on wages paid to employees in the City of Glasgow, sometimes referred to as payroll taxes. And further, the retention or rebate shall apply only to new employees added to NEMAC's base as reported to the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority when applying for the incentives. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
You've heard first reading of the ordinance. This is involving one of our excellent employers, NEMAC, and this is, uh, part of the incentive package that was offered to them through our economic development folks, Ms. Maureen Carpenter at, uh, at Barron, Inc., and I'm going to ask for a motion to consider passage on first reading.
Motion by Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second by Witcher.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, folks.
Mayor, Royce, before we do vote on that, did you have any indication of the number of new employees that are anticipated by this growth opportunity for them?
Uh, let's see, I don't think that we know the number of employees. Do we, Mona, we're going through this? I don't, I don't believe we know, but I can get that from Maureen, 'cause she'll have that, and I can report back to you on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good piece of information to have, but it's an opportunity for them to expand and-
Yes.
-continue their growth opportunities there.
Yes.
I mean, some employees is important, but this is an opportunity for us to help them as they grow.
It is, it is. It's, it's good to recruit, but it's also good to, to make sure that they're happy with the, that making the choice of Glasgow. Any other discussion, discussion on this particular, uh, ordinance? All right. With no more discussion, we'll call the question, and the clerk will call the roll.
Trig?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick?
Lowry? Yes.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
All right, the ordinance passes. Uh, let's see, we also have, uh, on the agenda, the consideration of a joint resolution between the City of Glasgow and Barron County. Rich, if you will read that interlocal agreement, sir.
Yes, sir. This is a joint resolution of the City of Glasgow and Barron County amending an interlocal agreement by and between the two units of local government to include additional services to be provided by the building inspector, excuse me, building inspector of Barron County, Kentucky. That whereas there is currently in place an interlocal agreement, which was originally approved in June of 2013 by the city and county, and which was amended in October of 2016 by both governmental bodies. Whereas the aforementioned interlocal agreement relates to inspection services provided by the building inspector of Barron County for the City of Glasgow. And whereas the City of Glasgow and Barron County wish to further amend the aforementioned interlocal agreement to include the following. Clarification that the Barron Fiscal Court retains 100% of the fees collected for inspections performed outside the city limits. Two, it adds a provision that the City of Glasgow shall furnish one of the required employee positions within the building inspector's office, so that the building inspector will qualify for expanded jurisdiction. And three, it adds a provision that authorizes the building inspector to issue contractor licenses and collect fees for same, which are to be split, if implemented, equally between the city and the county. Now therefore, in light of these recitals, be it hereby jointly resolved by the city and county, that the amended interlocal agreement, attached as Exhibit A and incorporated by reference, shall be and hereby is approved as amended. This provides that the city hereby appoints the building inspector of Barron County to carry out not only its obligations to provide exclusive electrical inspection services, but also to carry out the city's obligations to provide exclusive building inspection services in accordance with all local, state, and federal laws, adopted today's date.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. In a great nutshell, what it amounts to is, this is, this is another one of those cool things, where, uh, we are expanding our jurisdiction for our building inspector and electrical inspection department. Right now, if you come to Glasgow, uh, and you apply for a certain type of license or inspections, uh, it's about eight months to get that done. But we have jointly hired another building inspector, another office personnel, and we are expanding the jurisdiction, and we're on a one-year training, so to speak, uh, window. At the end of that one year, that, uh, eight months is gonna be cut to two weeks. So we're gonna become much more friendly for people to turn around and consider to do business just by going through these motions and, uh, approving this, uh, joint, uh, resolution. I guess that's sort of a sales pitch, but at this time, I will entertain a motion for us to, uh, pass this joint resolution.
Motion.
Okay, by Councilman Marion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? All right. This is a resolution, so I'll just do a voice vote right here. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the resolution passes. Uh, let's see, couple of things here from the announcement world. I want to let you know that, uh, we, the City Hall's gonna be closed on the fourth day of July. On the sixth day of July, come get in front of Glasgow City Hall and enjoy the music of the Glasgow Community Band. Bunch of local musicians who, if you haven't heard them recently, they practice and they are really good. If you missed them at Memorial Day, you really want to come out here and enjoy the Glasgow Community Band on the sixth day of July, and then come back, uh, and, uh, on the 12th, yes, the Louisville Orchestra is coming back. It's gonna be on the 12th day of July, out here in front of City Hall. It's gonna be really good with, the bunting's are up, the square looks beautiful, everybody's gonna be in a very patriotic mood, and, uh, we have these wonderful opportunities from the community band and from the Louisville Orchestra that you really don't want to meet. Nick, I've got to say, you have the most patient, forward little kids I've ever seen in my life, who have sat here and, uh, just been perfect little angels for the entire length of this, uh, council meeting. Uh, the next time we're gonna do this is gonna be on July the 10th. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Motion.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a wonderful evening.